Okay, great. Hello and welcome to the July 21st, 2014 Hillsborough Township Board of Education Meeting. In accordance with the State Sunshine Law of New Jersey, adequate notice of this meeting of the Hillsborough Township Board of Education was provided on July 17th, 2014, to the Hillsborough Beacon and Courier News. May I have a roll call, please, Mr. Mahmood?
Surely. Ms. Bogaczewski? Ms. Santafonte? Mr. Datta?
Here.
Mr. Gillette?
Here.
Mrs. Haas? Mrs. Haley? Mr. Pulsofer?
Here.
Ms. Wasson?
Here.
And Mr. Kent?
Here.
We have a quorum.
We have a quorum. Whereas the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231 of the laws of 1975, provides that a public body may exclude the public from that portion of the meeting of which the public body discusses certain matters for which confidentiality is required, as permitted in Section 7B of the Act, resolved by the Board of Education of the Township of Hillsborough and the County of Somerset and State of New Jersey as follows: The matters to be discussed are personnel matter. Matters discussed in the executive session shall be disclosed to the public when the need for confidentiality no longer exists. I'd like to entertain a motion to go to executive session.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? We're going into executive session, we'll be back at 7:30. Rock and roll. Okay, we're back from executive session again. Welcome to the July 21st, 2014 Hillsborough Township Board of Education Meeting. May I have a roll call, please, Mr. Mahmood?
Surely. Ms. Bogaczewski? Ms. Santafonte? Mr. Datta?
Here.
Mr. Gillette?
Here.
Mrs. Haas?
Here.
Mrs. Haley?
Here.
Mr. Pulsofer?
Here.
Ms. Wasson?
Here.
And Mr. Kent?
Yes.
We have a quorum.
Let's rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
(Inaudible) of the United States of America. To the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Just to make people aware of the schedule that we're going to have tonight, we came back from executive session. We're going to have another executive session starting at 8:30 for two hearings that will end at 9:30, so if we get our agenda, action agenda completed before then, then we'll just continue on, otherwise we'll come back at 9:30 to continue with the open meeting. Okay. Correspondence is as we have in the agenda, and I'd like to hand it over to Dr. Schiff for the Superintendent's Report.
Thank you, Mr. President. It is my pleasure to share with the Board some information that I just got today regarding our AP examinations. Every year, we receive a report on how well we have done over the past five years, and when I got the report, the first thing that I thought of was to make sure that I congratulate the students, the high school staff, as well as everyone in the Guidance Department who has worked so hard at increasing the number of students participating in our AP courses, as well as the number of tests. So I do want to just share for a brief moment, some of the statistics that we just got in today. The 2014 administration of all AP exams, we had 366 students take AP exams. Comparing that to 2010, we had 243. Close to 120 more students within a four-year period of time are taking AP exams. The number of exams that are taken by our kids is now 766, more than ever in our history. Four years ago, in 2010, 481 tests were taken. Truly significant increases that we have seen. The percentage of students who are scoring a three or above is 88 percent. Comparing that to the state average for AP exam at 74 percent, and the global average, everyone in the entire world that takes AP exams, 61 percent, three or above. Quite impressive. I'd like to spend a moment just congratulating, I think Ms. Fingers is in the back, our principal of the high school is back there, I'd like to give her kudos, as well as Hillary Charney, our director, all of the guidance staff, teachers, most importantly, our students, for doing such a phenomenal job on our AP examinations this year. We also have some exciting news, we have some administrative appointments that I'm very proud to recommend to the Board. First is Peggy Valente, who is our recommendation for our new supervisor of Fine and Performing Arts. Peggy is not a stranger to Hillsborough Public School, she was the former supervisor of Fine and Performing Arts from 2007 to 2010. She also was the Artist Curriculum Program Director at the Metropolitan Opera Guild, the Met, down at Lincoln Center. She's coming to us from Clifton, Board of Education, very large district, 16 schools, she has a staff of over 53. We hope to welcome Peggy back, she's not, I don't believe she's in the audience this evening, but that is someone that we're going to be welcoming back to our district. Second, also not a stranger to our district, Michael Davis is being recommended to be our new Assistant Athletic Director, and I did see Michael here, there he is. Thank you for coming tonight. Michael has been a Hillsborough health and physical education teacher since 2005, working at Aris during that period of time. He holds a Bachelor's Degree of Health and Physical Education from Kane University, holds a Master's Degree in Education from Mary Grove College, and has completed advanced graduate coursework in educational leadership at Kane. He holds a Principals and Supervisors Certificate, and we look to welcome you onboard in that new position for you as well. Lastly, our new Vice Principal over at Aris School, a third person who is also not a stranger to Hillsborough, Jennifer Batista. Jennifer holds a Bachelor's Degree in English from William Patterson University, and her Master's Degree in Educational Administration from the University of Scranton. She has been with us as a middle school literacy teacher from 2003 to 2007, and 2007 became our Writing Content Specialist and Read 180 Teacher. One thing I do also want to mention about that search, we had over 130 applicants for the position of it, so the cream definitely rises to the top. I ask for unanimous consent of the Board to move motions B-4.1, B-4.2, and B-7.1.1 for the Board's consideration at this time.
I'd like to entertain a motion to approve items D-7.1.1, B-4.1, and B-4.2.
So moved.
Have a second?
That's supposed to be you, right?
Okay. You moved. Have a second. Okay. Any discussion? Besides welcome aboard? Okay. Roll call, please, Mr. Mahmood?
Surely. Mr. Datta?
Yes.
Mr. Gillette?
Yes.
Mrs. Haas?
Yes.
Mrs. Haley?
Yes.
Mr. Pulsofer?
Yes.
Ms. Wasson?
Yes.
Mr. Kent?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Motion passed. Welcome aboard. We'll take a five-minute recess to welcome the folks, and so we'll be back, we'll start up at 10 of 8. Thank you. Okay, we're back. Dr. Schiff?
Thank you, Mr. Kent. I also wanted to introduce someone new to our dais, Dr. Gary Bowen, who is our interim Assistant Superintendent for Personnel. So, welcome to our dais. The Board had an opportunity to approve your appointment just shortly before. We are going to be asking the Board for consideration of elongating your stay with us, so, welcome.
Thank you very much.
Okay, continuing on with the agenda, we have approval of minutes. I'd like to entertain a motion to approve the June 23rd, 2014 Public Session.
So moved.
Have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Okay.
Just one minor correction, the assistant high school swimming coach, Adele Morgan, should have an E at the end of her name, it's just A.D.E.L.
Okay.
Sorry, I didn't get a chance to email you.
Thank you. We'll make the correction. Yeah.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions?
Abstained.
Okay. I'd like to entertain a motion to approve the June 23rd, 2014 Executive Session.
So moved.
Have a second?
Second.
Any questions? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions?
Abstained.
John Haley? Okay.
Motion passed.
Motion passes. I'd like to entertain a motion for the July 7th, 2014 Special Meeting.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions?
Abstained.
And Mr. Gillette?
And Mr. Gillette, got it.
Yep. Motion passed. Motion passes. Okay, Committee Reports, I don't know if we had any?
We do have to report out operations.
Okay.
We do.
We do have operations. It's just a phone conference on the class.
Yeah, I did, and I did want to report on this. Thank you, Dr. Schiff. As the public is aware, and the Board is aware, we are going through the process of trying to figure out, I can use that legal term with our attorney here, how we can provide busing for non-public students, who currently go to some of the areas, private schools, St. Anne's, Immaculata, and Immaculate Conception? Yeah, and Christ the King. And Christ the King, too. So, not to get too technical for the Board, but also, Mr. Mahmood provided an email to the Board late this afternoon, which, Board Members, if you haven't read it yet, that probably provides more information than I will now, but basically, the state says that we cannot provide busing to students, to non-public schools, that costs us more than the busing costs to our own students, and that number is determined, $884 per student.
Yeah, it's not actually what we would pay, but it is a prescribed per pupil.
Yeah, that's what I said, it's a state prescribed per pupil number, but the philosophy is that you don't spend more than you spend, that's sort of the overall philosophy of it, but it's a state prescribed number. So, we're working through, Mr. Mahmood and staff, Dr. Schiff is working with the private schools, and with our Transportation Department, and working through this, but here's the, and we haven't come up with a solution yet. The little, the issue at this point is that parents must be notified by August 1st, whether or not we will be able to provide busing. So since the issue is not yet resolved, we're most likely going to have to send notices to parents, informing them that busing to those schools will not be provided, and they will instead be provided what's called Aiden Lu, in other words, a check, for, I think it's for $884?
Yes, it is.
For the school year. See how that works out? So, we're going to provide that letter, most likely, and they'll decide probably today, probably, it's already decided that they're going to do that, and while we continue to work up to August 1st, and even past August 1st, to still come up with a solution. That's really the only thing I, if Mr. Eckert has anything to add on his last day with us?
No. We also had a discussion about class sizes, and in particular, at Woodfern School, that we had a discussion in operations, and at, and at education during the phone conference as well.
Oh, yes. Oh, yeah. I forgot about, it's so long.
Okay. With regard to the transportation for non-public students, there's a clarification that we just want to make sure gets communicated properly.
The one thing, Mr. Gillette, that we indicated at today's meeting with our non-public school administrators, is that the letter to the parents, letting them know that they're going to get Aiden Lu, will also indicate something to the effect that we're still looking to work out a solution, so while you are getting Aiden Lu, we think the district is working or trying to work with the non-publics for a solution.
Right, so we'll provide that information also in the letter, as I just indicated, that we're going to work up to August 1st, even past August 1st, to continue to find a solution. Meanwhile, we must provide you with this letter, also, we'll not, you won't have it by August 1st, and we'll be delinquent.
Yeah, and the letter will also indicate that we will continue to work cooperatively and collaboratively to try to find a solution. Mr. Mahmood, myself, Mr. Eckert, and a representative from the Transportation Department had a meeting today with the non-public administrators, and they were more than cooperative, more than willing to bend as much as they can to try to get the cost within a budget that the Board could provide transportation, because it's, the Board is not allowed to spend more than $884 per student, and unfortunately, they've had some declines in enrollment that has caused this concern. But we are looking at cluster stops, we're looking at, rather than 180 days, maybe 175 days, transportation, and this is, these are ideas that they are discussing with us also, and we do appreciate their cooperation and collaboration. If we can provide the transportation, we will provide the transportation.
Okay. Thank you.
Do you want to talk about the class?
Okay. Education Committee. Mrs. Haas?
Oh.
Oh, a question about this.
I just have another question. What kind of, what kind of numbers are we looking at?
How many students?
Of students? That we involve in non-public?
Three dozen, I'm not sure. Yeah, it's probably, Ms. Haas, I don't have the exact number, but it's probably in the mid-60s. I just don't have that number exactly.
Going to how many different schools?
I think we're looking at about four or five. I don't have the exact information in front of me.
So you're talking about, like, possibly 12 to 15 kids per school?
It's a little bit more, I would think. I think it's closer to about 130 or so.
Yes.
We have Immaculate Conception, Immaculata, Christ the King, and St. Anne's, I believe, are the four that we're looking at. The, it really comes down to if it can be done in a way, and they have to be pretty filled buses, it has to be pretty efficient in order to get to the 884 per pupil dollar budget that we're allowed to do. We, a Board cannot spend more than $884.
So how have we been doing it in the past?
It's been less than $884, because they had more enrollment.
When they have more enrollment, the buses, the bus still costs the same amount of money to go to that school, but if they're filled up with 40 students on that bus, rather than 20, it's just, you know, it's half the price per student.
There's been a drop of about 30 students in the non-publics.
I think it's, I think it's like 25 to 35 students per school.
Mm-hmm.
So, for the, for the next Operations Committee, as this continues, I'd like for us to understand what our transportation per student cost is for the public, and if there's a huge disparity, then that may require a legislative solution.
Yeah, absolutely. Absolutely. Not something that we came up with, obviously.
Yeah, absolutely. Yep.
Okay. Any other questions on the Operations Committee? Thank you, Mr. Gillette. Education Committee?
Please.
There was, there was the meeting with the teleconference with regard to the single, single item with Woods Road.
Just for recollection purposes, we had a telephone conference with both the Operations Committee separately, and then the Education Committee separately, to discuss the class sizes at, at Woodfern. There had been public comment about opening up an additional section, and lowering our class size procedure from 25, is the class size max in second grade, to closer to 22, was one of the requests, or at least to add another section, that they were going from four sections of first grade down to three sections of second grade, and both Committees had conversations about, about that, and I'll let the Board describe the decisions.
I mean, basically, it was to keep the policy as it is, and to take it into account for the next budget year, as we can prioritize across the many competing goals and constraints of the district.
I also spoke with Mr. Carrigan this morning to get the most latest update on where we are in Woodfern Second Grade, and we are at 75, we're right at the tipping point. Another student registered before, before August 1st, we'll open up a fourth section.
This is kind of a committee, it was a committee of the whole. Two weeks ago, we had a, we approved the minutes for the special meeting, it was the first half of our retreat, in which we were trained on ethics, as is required to do on an annual basis, and then we also reviewed the Board's self-assessment. There were three areas that were identified, and those will be directed over to the Governance Committee to come up with some Board goals, on how to approve those areas that were highlighted in the self-assessment. Okay. We're going to open the floor to comments from the public. This can be for new items, or items on the action agenda. Okay, see, oh, okay.
Hi, my name is Jean Trujillo, I live at 5 Eric Court. My question today is actually about Chromebooks. I understand that we're going for the one-to-one in grades 5 through 12, I think that's a great idea, you know, excellent, but I did have a question about the insurance policy of $45, and I understand it's optional. My question is, what happens if a family decides to decline the $45 insurance fee, and something happens to the Chromebook? Is the parent then responsible?
That's correct. The parent assumes the responsibility for any break and fix damage that would need to be repaired.
Okay.
Or to repair for lost or stolen as well.
Lost or stolen. So, will, when we get the information in August about the $45 insurance, will it, will it contain all of the caveats? Is it like one of those spills coverage, like spills, damage, drops?
It's everything.
It's everything?
Yep.
Is there an option to have a longer-term insurance, instead of the one year for $45?
Not at this point, maybe in the future, but in terms of next year, it would be $45, it covers the whole thing, soup to nuts, for that year.
For that year. So, will the student in the second year that they have the Chromebook, it will be the exact same machine, and they're paying $45 for that second year for the older?
Yeah, that's not necessarily the case. We'll have to look at it and see where we're at, and determine whether or not we'd want to farm that out, third party, or do multi-year, those type of things. So we, the Board has engaged in a four-year lease in order to pay that off, so we anticipate that every four years, we would have, we would have new. And as you're aware, typically, what happens is that the insurance cost goes down as the product that gets older and older. We have to run the numbers before that, so we're not, we're not ready at this point to make a commitment about what insurance will look like year two of full implementation.
So, there is a possibility that in the second year, the price for the insurance would go down, or you're not, you can't, I guess my question is, I went on Amazon and I looked, $45 for one year sounds about right, you know, for the C720P, but then if you look at a two-year lease, I'm sorry, a two-year warranty, the price goes down to $62, so now you're talking about $31 per year. I was just wondering if the Board, the Technology Department has thought about that?
Let me just clarify one thing, because Dr. Antunes just whispered in my ear, it actually will pay for everything twice. So after it's lost or stolen, the third time, the parent would have to pick up the cost of it. So, so it's really two major problems, and the Board will pick it up, but if there's a habitual issue with the machine, then we are defining that as neglect, and the parent would need to pick up the cost of that. That hasn't been the situation in other districts that have gone one-to-one, that that becomes a real problem, but I'm not prepared at this point to discuss what year two insurance is going to look like with the one-to-one.
Understood. So my question is, when the Board and the Administration had thought about doing one-to-one for the Chromebook, is there a reason why the case, the insurance was not covered?
Just cost.
For cost.
It was cost.
So then, would it be fair to say that the one-to-one, I mean, every student is required to have it, what, I mean, I'm for the one-to-one, but I'm just saying, like, you know, hypothetically, if a parent was not wanting the Chromebook, I mean, what, how would that work for the student or the family, because I can imagine that the $45 for some parents, for some families, and getting the case, et cetera, might be a financial burden, and I understand that there's the desire in the Board, in the Hillsborough School District, to have uniformity in technology, but then you bring up this additional cost burden for families. Can you comment on that?
For children that are on free and reduced lunch, we will assist financially. The issue, however, if a parent chooses not to wish their child to participate in the process, they are denying their child the new pencil and paper, the new fundamental way that kids are accessing digital information, and those type of things. We would handle those on a case-by-case basis, but no, it's the expectation that all children will have this type of access, regardless of their economic situation.
Okay. So, would parents, if they chose to provide their students with a, perhaps a nicer or better, for example, screen, screen quality computer, would that be allowed, or is the expectation that all students would use the C720P?
The expectation is that all students would be using the same, the same product, and the reason is, is that we have a great deal of training that's going into preparing for the teachers to use it, the software that's available, how kids are working and navigating through all of the different programs. It is a much better process than, than the bring-your-own-device processes that we see in other, in other districts. And our research has, has taught us that for districts that do a bring-your-own-device versus everyone getting the same device, you have a much different type of instructional environment. One's transformative, and one is a better way to type, and a better way to surf the Internet type of thing, where we're reaching much further than that.
Okay, I understand, thank you. Just one last question, I understand that we talked about Wi-Fi being available in the schools, that there was going to be upgrades to it, faster speeds, and so forth. Has there been discussion about Wi-Fi in the home for those students who may not be able to, you know, have that opportunity?
We have had conversations about that, and we'll be looking for funding resources in order to provide for those families that do not have Internet access at home. It's a very small proportion of our, of our community, but they do exist, and it is our expectation that all kids will have, will have that type of access.
Okay. Okay, thank you very much. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you. Okay. Moving on to the action agenda. Dr. Schiff?
Thank you, Mr. Kent. I ask for the Board's consideration of the following motions under the area of education, to approve travel-related expenses, the HIP investigation list, those teachers that we're asking for approval for participating in the Workshop Model Institute, to approve teachers participating in the K-4 Science Summer Institute, the Next Generation Science Standards, and approve the Science Common Assessment Development, and approve the teachers participating in the U-ME and the PLC Summer PD Institute, and approve teachers for the summer department work, approve teachers for the kindergarten screenings, approve overnight band trip, approve a nurse to attend the overnight band trip, approve the nurse to attend the Florida Band Trip, and that's all for that section.
Okay. I'd like to entertain a motion to approve items A1 through A11 of the action agenda.
So moved.
Have a second?
Second.
Okay. Any questions? I do. Item, when you look at item A10 and A11, one is for a nurse for an overnight band trip for five days, and it's given a rate of a per diem and a not to exceed, and I look below for an overnight band trip, different state, but again, for five days, and here, it's on an hourly basis?
One of them is our nurse, so we pay the hourly rate, the other one is a substitute, we pay a flat rate. The substitute, we pay a flat rate to, our nurses, we pay the hourly rate per diem.
Okay. And so, the hourly rate is a substitute, we're not able to get somebody of our own staff?
The other way around, the hourly rate is our, is our nurse. We employ that nurse, throughout the whole year, who went on the truck.
Okay.
We were unable to get a substitute, and actually, we prefer our own nurses to attend as they know the kids.
Why don't we just pay our staff on a per diem rate? I guess is a question.
It's my contract, I believe.
Okay. And then the other, the other thing that I noticed is that the A11 is for, it's a request to compensate somebody for something that's going to happen in the future?
Actually, it happened, it just happened this May and June, which is why you see the nurse that's on there for the one that's going to happen in August.
Right. Let me, please let me finish. Okay. So it's up to, and it has a certain amount, for the, for the day that happened, which was back in May, so we've had multiple Board meetings since then, why is this coming up on now? And the other question I have is, why is the total hours not defined? Why does it say up to, or not to exceed 61 hours, when the number of hours should be well-known? So there, this actually should have been presented to the Board before the meeting happened, before the event happened.
Yes.
It wasn't, and now when it is, it's not even defined as to how many hours, and it's after the fact, so that should be known.
It is actually 61 hours, and we received a timesheet for it. The Business Office received a timesheet, brought it back to our office.
Then it's from a clarification perspective, I ask next time not to say not to exceed, because I raised those questions.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you. Any other discussion?
I guess I have a question as to why...
I guess I have a question as to why we are carrying this expense. We don't carry the expense for any of the rest of the trip that's on the kids, correct? That we have to pay, that the parents can't contribute as part of their children's, you know, if we think it's going to cost thirty-five hundred dollars to pay a nurse to go on the trip, we do that for chaperones all the time. We distribute that cost across the numbers of kids going on the trip. So why don't we do that for something like this?
The contract says we pay them, we pay them. I don't know what to tell you. That's, I mean, in some cases it is, but the nurses are on twenty-four-seven, so.
I'm not arguing that we shouldn't, that we shouldn't be paid for this. I'm just saying, does the contract say that it has to come out of our funds versus the parents who are supporting the trip?
We can certainly discuss it with our new supervisor of Fine and Performing Arts and see if that would be, I don't know what the impact of that decision would be. I think we need to understand that more before we made a decision, one way or the other. And we may want to think about that in terms of any staff member going on a particular trip, that we wouldn't just focus on one band trip with this. We would have to think of it in terms of equal application across all trips. And we do send nurses, and I believe we pay for those nurses to go on all sorts of trips. So, you know, we may want to discuss it in education and see if we wanted to develop a policy that overnight field trips, that the board does not pay for shifting the cost burden from the board to the families. You know, we can certainly talk about that and try to run the numbers if that was something that the board was interested in contemplating.
Okay. We can direct that to the Education Committee. I think it's worthwhile.
Don't we have to do this?
There are times when you have to send nurses, otherwise you'd be denying access to a student who requires a nurse.
Well, that's what I'm saying. We have to send nurses, other districts don't.
There are times when you do have to send nurses, but other districts sometimes do different things.
Yeah, and I think the question is more, who pays for the nurse and whether or not, because we could not deny a child going on the trip because we couldn't have a nurse. But the question is, who would pay for it and what happens if we don't generate enough revenue from it to support a nurse? I guess, just talking out loud, it could get a little complicated.
So let's send it to the Education Committee so it can be reviewed in detail and the multiple issues can be considered. Thanks. Any other discussions on items A one through eleven? Okay, roll call, please, Mr. Mahmood.
Surely. Ms. Santafante?
Yes.
Mr. Dada?
Yes.
Mr. Gillette?
Yes.
Mrs. Haas?
Yes.
Mrs. Haley?
Yes.
Mr. Pulsifer?
Yes.
Ms. Wasson?
Yes.
And Mr. Kent?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, to you and with the action agenda. Dr. Schiff?
Thank you. I ask for the board's consideration of following motions that I'm recommending under the area of Human Resources to recognize the retirements of George Taylor, who has been in the district since nineteen eighty-eight, a health and physical education teacher from Autton Road School. We appreciate all of his commitment to our district over the years. Also recognizing the resignations as listed, to approve the unaffiliated administrators' revised salaries, to approve the revised new hire salaries, the contract changes as listed, we already acted on B four dot one and four dot two, but moving on to four dot three, to approve group changes, to approve the leaves of absences, and to approve the appointments of the supervisor, which we already did, and to affirm the appointments of the teachers as listed, long-term subs, custodians, and coaches, approve substitute teachers as listed, extra period coverage, revised twenty-fourteen Summer enrichment program as per attachment, approve the extended school year program salaries, approve summer workshop hours and technology turnkey trainer salaries, as well as approve the high school winter coaches for the twenty-fourteen, twenty-fifteen as per the attachment, and to approve the revised interim assistant superintendent for personnel.
I'd like to entertain a motion for items B one through B fifteen excluding B four point one, B four point two, B seven point one point one.
Yep. So moved.
Do I have a second? Any discussion? Okay. Mrs. Haas?
Yes, I'd like to make a correction on item B nine. I'm not aware of a Tracy Frazier or an Annie Unishevitz in our district, but I am aware of a Jan Frazier and a Maureen Unishevitz. I think that ought to be corrected.
Actually, Maureen's proper name is Annie.
You're kidding me.
No, I'm not. And Tracy Frazier is actually Jan Frazier's daughter-in-law. So yes, we do have one.
Yes.
Can we separate out the, sorry, fifteen?
B fifteen? Okay. I'd like to separate out B fourteen and B thirteen. Any other items to separate out? Okay, so first we're doing B one through B five, actually, B one through B fifteen excluding four point one, four point two, seven point one point one, thirteen, fourteen, and fifteen.
Yep.
Okay. What's that? Okay. Four point one, four point two, seven point one point one are administrative appointments that we did at the very beginning of the meeting. So it's B one through B twelve with those exceptions of those three. Okay. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Sure. Ms. Santafante?
Yes.
Mr. Dada?
Yes.
Mr. Gillette?
Yes.
Mrs. Haas?
Yes.
Mrs. Haley?
Yes.
Mr. Pulsifer?
Yes.
Ms. Wasson?
Yes.
And Mr. Kent?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, I'd like to entertain a motion to approve item B thirteen of the action agenda.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Okay. Since I asked for it, I'll ask the question. The turnkey teacher trainers, I'm assuming that that's for the implementation, the one-to-one?
It is. These are the, yeah, these are the teachers that provide training to other teachers throughout the year. This is what we've shared with the board, the Education Committee. That has been very, has been widely, very popular. Lots of teachers are taking a great deal of courses. I think we had over ninety percent or so of our teachers complete six hours of training or more using the turnkey trainer options that we have. So this is now the core way that we are moving our district ahead in terms of training our teachers for the, not only the one-to-one, but all technology integration. It's outside of the school day.
Okay.
Evenings, mornings, weekends.
I guess I was surprised by how many turnkey trainers there were for the elementary school. Five and up, I completely understand, but.
This is what we did last year too. We had two per each elementary school. I think it was four for the intermediates and eight for the high schools.
Okay, do we have, do we have job descriptions for what these roles are?
Yes.
And then the stipend, that's a stipend, it's not a, it's not, it's not a, it's not tangible. Okay. And then what determined the rate for the stipend?
I think it was based upon, yeah, when we established the job description, we kind of backed into it based upon the hours that we were going to require the turnkey trainers for preparation and implementation of the courses that they were offering.
Okay. That's all the questions I had. Roll call, please, Mr. Mahmood.
Surely. Ms. Santafante?
Yes.
Mr. Dada?
Yes.
Mr. Gillette?
Yes.
Mrs. Haas?
Yes.
Mrs. Haley?
Yes.
Mr. Pulsifer?
Yes.
Ms. Wasson?
Yes.
And Mr. Kent?
No.
Motion passes.
Motion passes. I'd like to entertain a motion to approve item B fourteen.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
My son swims, so. So he participates in a high school winter team, so I'm going to abstain from that. So I don't know if there's any other discussion. Roll call, please, Mr. Mahmood.
Ms. Santafante?
Yes.
Mr. Dada?
Yes.
Mr. Gillette?
Yes.
Mrs. Haas?
Yes.
Mrs. Haley?
Yes.
Mr. Pulsifer?
Yes.
Ms. Wasson?
Yes.
Mr. Kent?
Abstained.
Motion passes.
Motion passes.
Okay, and then I'd like to entertain a motion to approve item B fifteen of the action agenda.
So moved.
Do I have a second? Okay, discussion? Mrs. Haley?
No personal knock against Dr. Bowen. He seemed like a lovely man. However, it's always been my position regarding this actual position that I didn't want to hire Mr. Whitlock in the first place because I felt we should have had a discussion as an administration, as a board, about looking into Director of Personnel instead of hiring another assistant superintendent. So aside from the fact that, you know, haven't voted to add or, you know, personnel over the years, it's just I'd like to take this time to also say I think that we should have that conversation again now that we're in this position. That's all.
I think it's worthwhile having that discussion for the permanent position within the HR Committee.
I was going to piggyback on what Jen was saying is I think now's a good time for us to evaluate what we want with that position again, since it's another year, you know, another year and we're starting all over again. So I'd like us to look at what other districts are doing. I don't think everyone, and we are not every district, but I don't think every district has an assistant superintendent as well. So it would be a good time just for us to evaluate what we want in general as we look at positions.
Mrs. Haas?
I would also like to say that I welcome Dr. Bowen to the district. I have great admiration for you. I think you will contribute greatly to this district. However, I'm also very disappointed that twice we have failed to maintain this position. And I really think, as do my colleagues, that we need to look at this position and see whether or not it is worthy of an assistant superintendent. Personally, I think a personnel director would be fine. Preferably, it would be somebody who actually knows something about personnel. And I really think that we need to stop doing this. And I'm not quite clear why we need to approve a position from July first through December thirty-first. I think that, you know, if this is an important position, it needs to be jumped on, the decision needs to be made as to whether or not to refill it at all, or to refill it with a Director of Personnel, or to continue on this path that we have now failed at twice. And that should be able to be done in much less than six months.
Yeah, I guess I.
I do not support, you know, six months.
Okay. Thank you, Mrs. Haas. I guess I take issue with the characterization that this position has failed twice. I think that that role has been very important for this district, again, given the size and complexity of the staff. But I'm aligned with, when you have an opportunity to reassess that it was. But again, the motion on the floor is for an interim assistant superintendent for personnel.
My issue in terms of, you know, not considering that to be a personnel position includes the fact that we still do not have proper classification of all the positions in the district, which to me, as I said last time, is Personnel one oh one. And I think that we need to have a focus on proper salary administration across the board. And I do not think, and I never thought, that the assistant superintendent of personnel position should carry the same level as the assistant superintendent for curriculum, which to me has a lot more responsibility. So.
Thank you, Mrs. Haas. Mr. Pulsifer?
Well, we'll take it under advisement to the HR Committee to review this, but I think it's important with respect to the six months is that what we're saying is, we don't want to keep coming back while the search is ongoing to keep adding another month or adding another two months, that, at least my interpretation, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, Dr. Schiff, is that if we were to, if the search were to find a candidate, we decided to proceed and the search found a candidate, we would bring that candidate on as soon as possible and the interim position would end at some time coinciding with bringing on the new person.
By doing it this way, we'd have a date certain of the start time for the new person. Whenever we do a new search for a top-level administrative position, you have to consider about two to three weeks worth of posting. The interview process takes weeks in order to complete that you have, you have the candidate that you want, that's about another month or so and a half. And then you have at least sixty to ninety-day notice that that particular person has to give. So if all things work out and it's expedited, you're looking at an early start time of November. And that's very optimistic. So I think it's reasonable to have a date certain that the person would start, typically a January first start date is not uncommon. It also gives Dr. Bellin date certainty in terms of his commitment to the district as well, and he was kind enough to make that commitment and be flexible enough with us during that time. But moving forward, I'd like to be able to fill the position for January one, assuming that that's what the board wishes. I'm sorry, no, January one.
Two thousand fifteen.
Two thousand fifteen, assuming that that's the direction of the board.
So, Mr. Gillette?
Yeah, thank you. I'd just like to say I support hiring the interim superintendent until December thirty-first. But as some other board members have indicated, the last two people in that position full-time came from an educational background. That was their strength. And I wouldn't mind having someone with a Human Resources background instead and possibly not as a title of assistant superintendent. That was my preference last time, but, you know, Mr. Whitlock was a good candidate and certainly somebody who has experience at this level, and just using the person to my right over here as an example, you certainly can handle, no problem at all handling the personnel matters that come up within the school district because they've been doing that for all their life. Still, I'd like to see someone from a Human Resources perspective as an option this time. And I'd appreciate it if, and I usually don't say this, but I appreciate if the whole, the full board can all be sort of in on this. And I don't like when people do that at the Operations Committee and say like, hey, we want to be in on that budget, we weren't in on it enough. I appreciate the committee structure, but I think the last time around and other times, you know, Human Resources Committee gives a nod, you put the ad in with the requirements and we go from there. And the rest of the board sometimes is left catching up. Maybe other board members don't feel like that, but I think that we can get into trouble if the rest of the board is left catching up after you've already, you know, Dr. Schiff comes back and says, the ad's already in, the things, we've got the people coming, these are the people we asked for, we asked for educational professionals for an assistant superintendent, and it's almost a done deal. So that's my two cents on that.
We'd certainly try to keep everybody in loop, but I think there are very few positions where it's not refilling a position that we need to keep. So there are very few positions I think that would fall into that small gap of where we were in that situation, so.
No, but I think we talked about just in positions in general. Is it, do we still need that person? Is it the right position, the right person?
No, understood. My point is, no, Greg's point is about being involved in the whole process. My point is, the fact that we approve the postings and whatever else is because almost all of our positions are, either have been approved, or they're just, we're replacing somebody who we need to have, we, Director of Special Services or whatever else. We don't need, we don't come to the board from the committee for that approval because it's a position we have to fill. So it's not a, as I say, there are very few positions that fall into that ban. And for those, we certainly would work with the board on a larger discussion of that.
Yeah, and I totally appreciate that, Chris. I absolutely do. But every time this has come up, you know, even when we were hiring Dr. Whitlock, you know, there was controversy about the board members that were, you know, trying to make a stink about the fact that we really wanted to see the evaluation of possibly doing a Director of Personnel or a Head of Personnel as opposed to assistant superintendent. So I brought it up only because, well, that's what I've done with this position each time. We've also had an interim. And I think that I just wanted to make a point that this is the time for us to really have this discussion again because I feel like most people at the day is, I'm not saying that they necessarily agree with me, but they want to have that conversation. It's the only reason that I brought it up.
I think we should.
May I just make this suggestion, only because during the summer, the board doesn't meet as often? We do have an HR Committee meeting in August, I believe, that we'll put that on as an agenda item, and then we'll have a public discussion August eighteenth. And then all that I ask from the board is that you give us clear direction administratively because if we have to wait another month to post for a position, whatever that position may be, whether assistant superintendent or a Director of Personnel, we don't want to lose out on good candidates and slow it down or get into a position of not having coverage in that position during that period of time. So I would just suggest the board consider doing it that way. Comes out of committee, make a decision, have a public... Comes out of committee, make a decision, have a public comment, make a decision, and give direction on August 18th. And so I'll hold the posting until the middle of August.
So I'm suggesting that we extend that position just for one month?
No.
No?
No, because we won't have a replacement for a long time.
Not only that, I may have to come back to the board and say we need to extend it even longer because we're delaying our process.
You know, you're not, you're starting a search at the beginning of the school year, which is also tough, too. We went through that with Director of Special Services, so I, I'm not trying to hold you hostage or keep your hands tied, it's just bringing the point up.
No, absolutely. The board, the board needs that conversation, absolutely. I just want us to all be cognizant of the timing of it.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Schiff.
And we still have work to do for the next six months, so we need somebody there while we're doing all this discussion, yeah.
Any other discussion? Roll call please, Mr. Mahmud.
Surely. Santafante?
Yes.
Mr. Dada?
Yes.
Mr. Gillette?
Yes.
Mrs. Haas?
No.
Mrs. Haley?
No.
Mr. Pulsifer?
Yes.
Ms. Wasson?
Yes.
And Mr. Kent?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Motion passes. Continuing on with the, ooh, it's 8:30.
Okay, we can go quick.
Okay.
Okay, I'd ask for the board's consideration of the following motions under the area of operations, to accept the monthly bills list, to approve line item transfers as listed, approve Policy 1620 Administrative Employment Contracts for second reading, and approve the tax payment schedule as listed, and award transportation contracts also as listed, and that's all.
I'd like to entertain a motion to approve items C1 through C5.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Yes.
Mr. Pulsifer?
Are these the only companies involved in bidding on the transportation contracts? I see two companies listed, but I wasn't sure if there were more involved in the process.
That was it? That was the only one, Mr. Pulsifer? Those were the only ones?
The first student embarker were the only two?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Correct. Mrs. Haas?
In today, today I received the New Jersey School Board Association newsletter that talked about the tax payments, that municipalities are not allowed to withhold tax payments. This was a legal case that was settled for a different set of circumstances than we're under, but in light of that decision, I'm wondering why we get payments once a month instead of the four times a year when taxes are actually received by the municipality.
Think of my cash flow, it just really works for us, right?
I think, Mrs. Haas, just from a cash flow perspective, this payment schedule just works for us. We're always able to manage our cash. There's no particular reason, you know, we can look at the payment structure, we've, this kind of has worked with us, at least for the six years I've been here. So the payment keeps our cash fluid, we're able to pay our monthly bills, things are pretty, you know, calm with the cash. But if we look at that, if you want us to take a look at how we receive cash and what our flow is of cash, we'd have to kind of do an analysis to see what we're...
Who sets this?
We work with the town. We actually work with the CFO from the town, and we share the schedule prior to putting it on the board agenda. We kind of ask, are you okay with this? And they've been very prompt, we've had no issues with payment, so we've been very happy with the way the structure has been set.
Okay, but Millstone has different circumstance than Hillsborough does.
Yeah, that's true.
Why isn't it consistent?
It's not as much. With Millstone, Mrs. Haas, we actually just followed because we kind of commandeered Millstone, so we followed what their tuition payment would be. So that cash flow did not really hinder the district's cash fluid situation, so we just followed when we inherited them, we followed their tuition payments. That's the difference.
Very strange. All right, I would like a further explanation as to why, you know, it's not collected when taxes are.
We can ask.
Okay.
Thank you, Mrs. Haas. Roll call please, Mr. Mahmud.
Surely. Ms. Santafante?
Yes.
Mr. Dada?
Yes.
Mr. Gillette?
Yes.
Mrs. Haas?
Yes.
Mrs. Haley?
Yes.
Mr. Pulsifer?
Yes.
Ms. Wasson?
Yes.
And Mr. Kent?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Motion passes. Okay. Whereas, the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231 of the laws of 1975...
Are we going to allow for any other public comment?
It's going to have to be after.
Okay, got it. I wasn't sure what we were doing.
Actually, let me talk, I'll talk the process. So we have, we've had a preset start at 8:30, we're running a little bit late. As I mentioned at the beginning of the meeting, we will go to executive session, have those two hearings, and then come back at 9:30 to continue on with the agenda, which includes the second round for public comment, old news from the, and new news from the board, and then adjournment.
Action won't be taken.
We will not be taking action when we return from executive session.
May I also ask that before executive, we also update the board on a grievance matter?
Okay. All right. What's that?
Action, sorry.
There, "Action will be taken," I corrected. We will be taking action when we return. Okay.
I'm glad I said that.
Thank you. Okay, whereas, the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231 of the laws of 1975, provides that a public body may exclude the public from that portion of a meeting of which the public body discusses certain matters for which confidentiality is required as permitted in Section 7B of the Act, resolved by the Board of Education of the Township of Hillsborough and the County of Somerset and the State of New Jersey as follows. The matters to be discussed are personnel matters and two student disciplinary hearings related to harassment, intimidation, and bullying.
And the grievance.
And, well, that's the personnel matter. Okay, and a grievance here, grievance update. Matters discussed in executive session shall be disclosed to the public when the need for confidentiality no longer exists. I'd like to entertain a motion to go into executive session.
So moved.
Second.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we're going to executive session, we'll be back about 9:30. Again, we will take action. Okay, hi, we're back from executive session, if we can have a roll call, please.
Sorry about that. It's always good to keep me on. Ms. Bogoszewski? Ms. Santafante? Mr. Dada?
Yes.
Mr. Gillette?
Here.
Mrs. Haas?
Here.
Mrs. Haley?
Here.
Mr. Pulsifer?
Here.
Ms. Wasson?
Here.
Mr. Kent?
Here.
We have a quorum. We have a quorum, okay. I'd like to entertain a motion to affirm the following HIB investigations, WRS dash 2014 dash 002, and HHS dash 201314 dash 0008.
So moved.